6:00 PM. This is a regularly scheduled board meeting of the Swanee County Board of County Commissioners. We'd like to welcome everyone here today. Before we get started here this evening, I've asked County Administrator Randy Harris to lead us in the invocation and the pledge. Please rise.
Raise your heads, please. Father, we praise you and thank you for your love and your mercy and your kindness. We thank you that you bless us so mightily and abundantly. Father, we thank you for the opportunity to come together this evening and attend to the business of this community. And in this meeting, we ask for wisdom and guidance and counsel from above, and we pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Harris, for handling that for us. Before we get started this evening, I'd like to make light of a few changes that have occurred. You'll notice at the top of your agenda, under the Attention section, some changes that have occurred is that during the time, during the Comments and Concerns section, individual speakers from the audience will be allowed to speak for three minutes following recognition by the chairman and must speak from the podium. Groups or factions representing a position on a proposition or issue are required to select a single representative or spokesman. The designated representative will be allowed to speak for seven minutes following recognition by the chairman and must speak from the podium. Speakers may make only one trip to the podium regarding each item they wish to speak on. So these items were made during the workshop, were put into practice by consensus of the board during that time. If you want to speak to the board, there are comments cards out in the lobby that you may fill out and bring up at any time to be considered later during that item, during that section of the agenda. I'd like to ask that you silence your cell phones and board members turn off the vibration due to the microphones. We'll jump right into our agenda this evening. Approval of minutes of the January 5th, 2016, minutes. Board members, are there any corrections or changes that you'd like to see in these Hearing none, I need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Commissioner Fleming, seconded by Commissioner Sessions. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. On the consent agenda this evening, we have four items, items two through five. Are there any items that any commissioner would like pulled for individual consideration?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to pull out of number four.
Commissioner Fleming has requested item number four to be pulled. Are there any others? Hearing none, I need motion to approval for items two, three, and five.
A move. Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Wainwright, seconded by Commissioner Gamble. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
At this time, though, as an addition to item, consent item number five, there's a proposed contract in there with Mr. Scarborough on the award, and if you would please address another motion to the execution of the proposed contract.
Okay. Are there any questions for the attorney regarding what he just spoke to the board Hearing none, I just need a motion to prove the execution of the chairman's signature on the contract.
A move. Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Wainwright, seconded by Commissioner Gamble. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Harris?
Just a quick comment. This exhibit goes with that contract as well. We were waiting for that. It came in later, but we finally received it today, so that is a part of its costs of additional sampling if DEP requires us to undertake any additional sampling.
Anybody have any questions on the instrument that Mr. Harris just brought our attention regarding the prices for analysis of those particular chemicals? Hearing none, there's a motion on the floor. What are the wishes of the board? Are all in favor say aye, excuse me.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Ready to check your mic.
All right. Commissioner Fleming, item number four.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, on Saturday, I went to visit the site of the proposed route of gas line. It was about a four or five mile hike out through the woods. And the route of that pipeline is right in the middle of some active and inactive sinkholes. They were right in the middle. My recommendation is that, recommendation, that we advertise in the newspaper and we do a workshop with all the commissioners. We go out together and look at that site, and then we can bring it back to this board and make a decision, a possible board decision. My reason for saying this is that there are some things that I found out that wasn't exactly true. 700 feet, that pipeline is right in the middle of those sinkholes. So that's my recommendation, and I'm offering a motion that we would take close consideration and look at that again.
Okay. So you're offering a motion to do a workshop? Is that...
Right.
Okay.
I do it require a motion.
I'm not sure that we, do we need to do a motion to authorize a workshop?
No, but on the resolution itself, it either, you know, that's what the agenda item would be, and so address the resolution declaring neutrality on it, either no movement and we'll let, and it'll let it die on its own, or somebody offer a motion with regard to the resolutions.
I understand.
Okay.
So we'll address this, address item number four first, and then if the board so chooses to not adopt the resolution, then we can talk about the workshop aspect of things. Is that okay?
Yes, sir.
All right. On item number four, what are the wishes of the board?
Well, I offer motion that we don't adopt the resolution.
Okay. There's a motion from Commissioner Fleming.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Commissioner Sessions. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, if we were to adopt it based on our discussion the other day, I mean, this doesn't preclude any commissioner from taking act, or not taking action, but participating on their own.
No.
In contrast to what, you know, the pipeline is wanting to do.
Right, yeah. I mean, there's a considerable amount that you can do with regard to contacting various agencies, congressmen. I mean, you can do a considerable amount of work on your own that I have engaged in and have met with people on the ground. I have, I'm going to meet with the geologist in the next couple, let's see, probably, I think it's this Friday, I think I got a meeting scheduled. So it doesn't preclude you from doing any work on your own, but I mean, anything that we pass, whether if we pass a resolution opposing it, still would have no, necessarily have any impact on whether or not the pipeline went through. So I think that the resolution clearly lays out that we, as a board, just, we can't come to a general consensus on it, so we just choose to remain neutral, so that we don't have to continue to sit through workshops and get lectured on it when it's probably not going to change yourself, your position, or Commissioner Gamble, or my position, or Commissioner Sessions, or Commissioner Fleming's position. So I just, I think that it's appropriate that we do something like this.
Understood.
I would agree.
You'd come to the podium.
Do you mind reading the resolution of the public?
I can read it here in just a second.
And I won't make any comments yet, but to me, the resolution is a form of censorship for the public. I just wanted to put that in the record, that citizens should be able to come up and comment, you know, and, you know, they do the groundwork, they've been doing, we've been doing it three years now.
Can you identify yourself for the record, please?
Deborah Johnson, DO Box 803, Welborn, Florida.
Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to read, read it in the record. Says, "A resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Swanee County, Florida, declaring its intent to remain neutral on the issue of the ability of Sable Trail Transmission LLC to locate an interstate gas transmission line in Swanee County. Whereas the citizenry of Swanee County have raised various concerns regarding Sable Trail Transmission LLC's proposed location of and routing of an interstate gas transmission pipeline which will traverse certain areas of the county, and whereas the board has heard and appreciates the concerns raised by the citizenry at numerous board meetings regarding, among other things, whether the proposed gas transmission line should be permitted to traverse the county, the specific proposed routing to be taken by the proposed gas transmission line, the location of certain above-ground installations and equipment, and whereas in response to some of the concerns the board previously passed Resolution 2016-22 recognizing the concerns of the citizenry regarding the relocation of the Hildress Compression Station, Compression Station 5, Option 2, and requested that Sable Trail Transmission LLC consider the relocation of the compression station to another location, and whereas the board recognizes that other agencies, federal and state, will determine the ability and desirability of Sable Trail Transmission LLC to locate its interstate gas transmission in the county and the potentially preemptive effect of the decisions of those agencies, and whereas the board desires to express to its constituency and its intention to not take a position on those issues and to respect those agencies' authority and determinations in an effort to quell citizenry inquiries of the board on those topics. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Swanee County, Florida."
Thank you. I would just like to point out that all those agencies are still in litigation in various forms and are not making any decisions anytime soon. I still find this form of censorship, we have information coming constantly, and need to walk that route.
Thank you, Mrs. Johnson.
Yes, sir.
I have, and I don't know how to use it.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Commissioner Wainwright?
Does, in public comment at the end of the meeting, if, don't they still have the opportunity to share their comments?
Yeah, absolutely. We determined at the workshop that anybody can come talk to us about anything at the end of the meeting.
Wanted to make sure. Thank you, sir.
Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Lori McCrany. I'm a Swanee County resident. I actually take exception to this resolution because you, in the wording of the resolution, it's like we will not hear any more input from the public when this is a developing public issue, and Mr. Fleming's recommendation is a very good one. If you adopt this resolution, you are basically saying we will not take a position, but you're not allowing yourself to see more evidence that you really should see. Mr. Fleming did take the time to walk out there and see active sinkholes, and these sinkholes are literally right on the pipeline route, and anyone that knows karstology knows that is disaster waiting to happen. So I would urge you to at least hold this workshop, take that walk, take that walk of faith for the public that's asking you to do so, and see for yourself, and, you know, consider situations like you've been in with Claustre, with the sinkholes out there, and to this company saying, "Well, if it caves in, we're just going to fill it with cement." Well, that's not a very practical option. If you see the area where this pipeline is going to cross, I think you would have a better understanding of why we have these issues with protecting the Swanee River. I think you're a little bit too quick to preclude taking a position on this. You're just saying, "We don't want to hear anymore." But I really think you need to keep an open ear on both sides of the issue. It's very apparent that you have sided with the companies that are sponsoring this pipeline, and you're trying to tell the public, "We've heard enough from you." So I would just like for you to consider actually holding this workshop, actually going out there, putting your boots on the ground, literally, and taking that hike and see what we're talking about. Mr. Fleming saw it, and he had a very strong impression from that, and you might have that same experience if you do so yourself. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McCrany. All right. Is there anybody further? Hearing none, what are the wishes of the board regarding the motion that's on the floor not to adopt this resolution?
I already made a second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, sorry, sorry. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Aye.
All right. Do we want, is there another motion that someone would like to make regarding adopting item number four?
Mr. Chairman, I'll just, before I make a motion, I'll make a comment.
Yes, sir.
Just to follow up on Ms. McCrany's discussion. I want to not closing my eyes to what's going on. I'm still looking, still researching, and as it goes forward, I'll continue to do that. I think for the most part, the way I look at this is an effort to just, folks not to come up here and asking us to take action very often, you know, regularly. The way I look at it is, I need to let those agencies do their work. I'm not a geologist. I need to let them do their work, and I'll research what they're doing. I can walk out there all day long, and I can't see under the ground. There are sinkholes all around my property. I've worked around them my whole life. I, you know, I know there's some concern, I do have concern about it, I'm concerned about, I take a lot of extra effort on our farm to make sure that we limit activities around sinkholes, because I don't want to mess up my groundwater. That's just what I do. So, I mean, I'm, I have the same concerns, but I think as we move forward, I'd rather let individuals that know and can research and provide that information that I can look at, that's what I'll be evaluating. And again, public comment at the meetings, we're not keeping people from, if anything new comes up, anybody can come up at the end of the meeting at public comment and make any kind of concerns and comments or create discussion, whatever the case may be. So it's not, we're not trying to mask it, we're not trying to hide it. It's just, it takes a lot of time to go through these things, and a lot of it, we can't solve right here without the information at our hands. It's still ongoing, the research is still ongoing, and I'm just waiting and seeing what's coming out as it comes. Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion to approve item number four.
Motion on the floor made by Commissioner Wainwright. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it if we'll strike the last sentence out, starting at "and determine in an effort to quell citizenry inquiries to the board on this topic." I just don't like that word, "quell."
I'll strike that line. I agree with Commissioner Gamble.
So Commissioner Wainwright, you've amended your motion to reflect the changes that...
Mr. Chairman, I'd rather, just for simplicity's sake, I withdraw my motion and offer a motion of approval excluding the last sentence of that last paragraph.
Well...
Well, after the comma.
Part of it. Part of it. After authority.
Put a period, authority.
There's a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any further discussion? Mrs. Johnson, very briefly.
I would just like to point out one thing. All 12 routes for this pipeline come through this county. All 12 will cross the Swanee River. Sable Trails has not given you the consideration of showing up at all to talk to you, to explain to you. They may talk to you on the phone, via email, they have not bothered to send their representatives. I've been at meetings where these topics have been brought up in other counties, and they've had that luxury. You do not have it. They're not even communicating face to face with you. So I just want to point that out, and the fact that we've been doing this three years, that we've got a lot of information, and it's good information.
Thank you, Mrs. Johnson.
You're welcome.
There's a motion and a second as the record reflects. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. All right. Moving back up to constitutional officers, if there are any constitutional officers present that would like to address the board at this time, please come forward to the podium. Seeing none, proclamations and presentations and time-specific items, there are none. Commissioner items, item number six, discuss funding for the Douglas Center. We'll turn our attention now to Commissioner Clyde Fleming.
Mr. Chairman, again, the members, the sheriff recently returned $330,000, a little over $330,000, back to the board, back to the county, and I'm requesting $75,000 of those dollars for some projects over at the Douglas Center.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Fleming. Is there any discussion on this item?
Is there any, what are the specifics that the money's going to be used for? Is it just going to be set aside in a pool?
Set aside in a pool.
Okay. So they'd be appropriated for the Douglas Center, but no specific appropriations for projects or anything like that?
At this time.
Is, is the insurance money that was collected from the damages, is that...
It's all in there.
It's in a separate line item?
It's in...
Yeah, for the Douglas Center. For the Douglas Center.
Well...
What were the allocations that the sheriff specified? Because I remember, I didn't, I didn't go along, I didn't approve it. I remember there was 100 for the library. What was the rest of it for?
That was last year.
That was last year.
He didn't make anything this year.
So the money that, so that's not going to affect the money at all that was brought back to the board at this last budget?
Everything that was set for, for the library, the Douglas Center last year, that was...
What did we set aside for the Douglas Center out of that money last year?
25.
Was it 25? Okay. I was thinking it was 50.
And I think 25 the year before, or 50 the year before, I can't remember.
There, there are a number of projects that have been discussed related to the Douglas Center, and there just has never been sufficient funding to really tackle any of the larger projects. We've got some smaller ones, and I'll be bringing plans back later on a covered pavilion.
So we're going to take these out of contingency funds? Is that what we're looking at doing?
The...
This hasn't been placed in contingency yet. These are simply unallocated.
No, I know. I'm talking, he's making a request to set aside $75,000. We've got to get it from somewhere.
Yeah, let me give you some numbers so you can work with.
That's what the sheriff gave us at last meeting.
I'll give you some numbers. General fund balance is 612,000 right now. Capital outlay, 2.1 million. Let's see here, those, the 330,000 is in fine and forfeiture now, but it can be moved over to the general fund, need be.
That's what I was asking about, or just of those monies that were there, we put them in fine and forfeiture. Were we talking about maybe taking that $75,000 out of that?
That's what he's requesting to be done.
Okay.
But I just, you know...
Well, any project that's going to, that they're going to come up with, or that we're going to come up with and propose, has still got to come before the board for approval, so the money's not going anywhere. We're just setting it aside...
We're just allocating it.
Into that line item.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. I don't have a problem with that.
Okay. Over, over the past several years, we've put 25 here, 25 there.
Right.
Some insurance money. I meant to call finance today, but I ran out of time.
I was out there, but I didn't get to.
Balance that we have, the total that we have set aside.
And there, for the Douglas Center?
Yes, sir.
I can't remember now. Outside of the insurance money, it ain't over 50,000.
Oh, okay.
I don't believe so.
I don't know, I had a figure of 67 in my head, but I could be wrong.
It might be that. I mean, it wasn't a great, great amount. I mean, excluding the insurance money.
No, it wasn't great. Some, you guys don't remember, did you?
No, I don't remember what it was.
But I guess what I was getting at is, with this 75, with what we already got, we're maybe looking at around 150,000.
Somewhere maybe.
Sir?
Somewhere maybe.
I think for what we need to do to bring it up to where we want it and to possibly meet some needs for the county is going to require considerable, a lot more than that. That's why at the workshop, when I brought up those plans on using some of the Douglas as storage, I was hoping that as we move forward and chose places for state attorney's office, that we might realize savings in other area and could possibly apply those savings towards the Douglas Center, so we could get the adequate funds that we need while we've got money in place to meet state attorney need and storage needs, because those were the two main needs that were addressed in our capital improvement plan.
Okay.
I don't have a problem putting 75 aside, but we just have to realize that what we need to do out there to bring three or four of those wings up to standard where we're going to be at for storage is going to take more than that. And I think if we keep putting 25 here, 25 there, from what the sheriff turns back, by the, you know, by the time we have enough to rebuild it, it'll probably be falling down. So, worse than what it is.
Just, just to comment, it's, we've, we've been out there and we've looked, and maintenance has looked, we've scoured those buildings, and, I mean, I'm not necessarily opposed to setting the money aside, and we certainly need to have a plan in place, but my plan ain't going to be to recovery, recover much of those buildings out there, because I think we're going to be losing a lot of money, throwing a lot of money away trying to renovate most of those buildings. The entire roof systems on, on all of them are just shot. And I can't remember now exactly, but there was some figures that were, we had worked up several years ago about going in and building roofs over these facilities, and it was, it was some crazy money. I'm sorry, I can't be more specific, I can't remember, but it was enough that we didn't want to use those buildings. Not, we didn't want to allow anybody to use them, we didn't want to try to renovate them, because it was going to be too much money and too much risk for the most part. So again, I'm not opposed to setting the money aside. That's going to be just the start. But first of all, we're going to, you know, we've said it all along, you know, we've got to have a vision of where we want to go with that piece of property down the road. I certainly want to develop it and use it for the benefit of the community. I don't have any problem with that, but I don't think it's going to be in the structures that are there.
Yeah. Well, I think anything, any money that we appropriate for specific projects should be, there should be, it should be included in the capital improvement plan. I think that if we designate $75,000 here, it needs to be listed in there.
Well, I believe we listed the Douglas Center...
We did.
In the capital.
But I'm just saying, I just don't want to set aside the money and just forget about it.
No, well, that's what I'm saying, there, putting 75 here, 25 there, for what it's going to take to even salvage a quarter of it, we don't have the money set aside. And if we don't...
Put some in.
Put some there, but if you don't, if we don't step up to the plate and come up with some alternative means of additional funds, we're not going to get there before that other portion that we're looking to redo is in a state of disrepair, where what we set aside is still not going to be enough. I've been on the board three years, and we've put aside, we've talked about it for three years, and we put aside $75,000 in total. I think, I can't tell you how much of it salvaged or how much isn't, but I know what we discussed, what I discussed at the workshop is, I believe there's enough out there to meet our storage needs and preserve the history of the buildings in a way that preserves them and provides, or meets county needs in properties that we already have and building that's already in the capital improvement plan that we already planned to restore. I believe that there's cost-saving measures that can be made by selecting a native basin site versus base, building it at the interstate of about $140,000, and I believe that that's well within our budget and our means to apply that as well as the 75,000. as well as the 75,000, towards the construction or the remodeling of it to help kickstart it and bring it in to meet some of our immediate needs. Because we know that Supervisor of Elections needs an alternative storage space than what we want to provide her once the Nettie Basin is torn down, which I believe she's already moved it upstairs. But if we get too stagnant on it, another year, a rock on, another year, a rock on, won't be any repairs there, and we'll still be storing her equipment upstairs and missing out on possible utilization of that building by maybe moving environmental health that way. That's just my thoughts on it.
The only other, the only other concern that I have is that we allocate these funds, set aside, then persons could come back before the board and say, well, you know, we want to use it for this particular project. And then it just, it just, and the board, it's 2,500 or 5,000 there. That, it's kind of like a little slush fund for specific projects. And I think, I think there needs to be a specific allocation for those funds as opposed to, to just placing them. That's just a concern that I have. But I do agree that there needs to be some sort of planning done in relation to where we put our buildings and renovations that we do on existing buildings. So, I mean, if the board wants to set aside 75,000, then that's fine. But it's, but you're right. I mean, the amount to restore those buildings far exceeds that. So, it needs to be in a comprehensive plan whereby you have deadlines to make it. Because like you're saying, you can set it there, you can build a building, and then the comfortable, wide and spacious road is just to go along as things have been going along. And then, next thing you know, you have a derelict property you've got to tear down. So.
Well, right now, we're using the funding source every year to further that project in the monies that the sheriff returns. You've got a large pool of candidates running for sheriff this year. I know at least of one that has personally told me, do not expect that money back if I'm elected. So, that funding source could very easily be cut off, either by us having to cut that budget or not getting it back. But then what do you do? Now, you're stuck with $75,000 in the bank for a project you know is going to cost well over that, and you're not going to have the means to do it. I think if we're going to do it, we would already committed 500,000 to build new Supervisor of Elections office, tear down the Nettie Basin. That's on top of, I mean, if we don't build Supervisor of Elections office, we've still got to tear the Nettie Basin down, so that's 100,000. That's 400,000. I don't, not going out there and screaming, let's spend 400,000 on it, but I think we have the funding now if we would follow our capital improvement plan the way that we have it to start some of those renovations and meet those needs of storage for constitutionals and a State Attorney's Office.
Well, whatever you're going to do, you need to lay out the plan and have specific dates and stuff like that.
Well, I'm not asking for that today. I'm just giving you my idea on, we need to set a plan down that shows five, 10, 15 years out. That's no doubt. The county's never done that. But I don't want to go planning five, 10, 15 years out when we have all this housekeeping that we just keep kicking, kicking the can down the road. We've got it sometimes.
But that's the maintenance you're talking, maintenance and carrying costs.
We accepted some buildings, like the one we're fixing to tear down and the Douglas Center, from other governing bodies that became our headache.
Yeah, and we're fixing it.
So, that was a burden that wasn't maintenance on our part. That was, we took buildings that needed maintenance. So, we have to decide which way we're going to go. You knock them down, or you fix them up. That middle of the road is going to be more costly down the road because it's just going to be worse, worse, and worse.
You're not, you're not going to get any argument from me, Commissioner. I'm saying, what I'm saying is, without a conference plan or an action plan, like you're saying, five, 10, 15 years, not to exceed 20 years, you know, you're going to continue to get that down the middle of the road because boards change.
Yeah, they do. I mean, I'm just saying, for me, I'd rather, if we're going to have these two projects on the books, if we can knock them both out at the same go-around, I would be fine with it.
You mean, you're talking about, there was some.
The State Attorney's Office and renovate what we're going to renovate out there.
Well, but that, that brings us to another discussion in regards to what buildings do we leave and what buildings do we keep out there?
So, I mean, that's a workshop or a discussion that we need to have. I don't know the day is necessarily the day to have it because I don't know anybody that's sitting up here or an owner who's going to tell you which building needs to be torn down.
You're going to have to get cost comparisons.
We already came up with.
Whether or not to renovate them or build new ones. I mean, there's a lot of different things to look at, all of which would have to come back to the board for approval.
Right, but I sat through meetings where, with the community, where they said, these buildings are fine to stay. These are to go. There is a plan circulating out there of buildings to keep and buildings to let go. So, and there may be, but I haven't, I haven't seen it.
I haven't either, but the thing about it is, it still goes back to the feasibility of whether or not it's affordable to keep them. And I'm just saying, and that can come back to the board later on.
And we, we can't sit up here and make that determination without data.
No, we can't. But we can't make that determination five years from now and think it's going to be any cheaper then than it is now.
No, it most certainly is not going to be cheaper to have an older, own an older building.
That's what I'm saying. We need to make, we need to have that discussion to fund it and move forward with it.
I mean, if we.
Mr. Chairman, is there a motion on the floor?
No. Not yet?
I'll second one of, there's one out there, one out there, Mr. Fleming.
Thank you. Motion approved.
Motion to approve the $75,000 appropriation for the Douglas Center. Do I hear a second?
You got a second.
Seconded by Commissioner Wayne Wright.
And that goes to the line item that already exists.
And the money's coming from fine and forfeiture.
Correct.
Seventy, the 330 that the sheriff returned. Okay. Is there any further discussion?
All we're discussing is, I'm not against it. I just wanted to be on the record that it's not enough. We need more to fix it up the way it needs to be, and we need it sooner rather than later.
Any further discussion?
We'll save it for a later date.
Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Thank you, gentlemen. Fleming? All right. Moving on to the county attorney items. Mr. Pravat, you have several here that are additional agenda items, but you can talk to us about them now or later, whatever you want.
Whatever the chairman prefers.
Well, let's just do it under additional agenda items and go from there.
All right, thank you. I'll have two items at that time.
Thank you. Moving on to general business. Item number seven, discuss with possible board action items associated with the capital improvement plan. There are three subsections numbered A, B, and C. One is selection of a contractor, B, authorize appraisal, and C, selection of land for construction of State Attorney Office. So, they were laid out in this order. We can discuss it however you guys wish to discuss it. I have some comments that I'd like to make as well after the fact. Anybody jump right in?
I make a motion, we accept, well, with a few changes. Using Nettie Basden, using Nettie Basden as the site for the construction of the State Attorney's Office. I've got a couple of changes on my drawing that I'd like to discuss.
Okay, so you're jumping to item number C then?
Yeah.
Site selection?
Yeah, I think we need to select the site.
Okay. All right, gentlemen, there's a motion on the floor for item number C. The location to be selected would be the Nettie Basden building. Mr., is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Commissioner Gamble, and now discussion. Mr. Sessions?
Looking at the retention, looking at the measurements here, it's 20,498 square feet. From a good source at Water Management, with the need of 17,000 square feet of impermeable, new impermeable surface, we really only need about 30% of that. So, which would be about 5,100, which would be about a quarter of the proposed site or the proposed water retention. So, we could probably turn the building and, and make it more in alignment with this building here and move the parking lot across the front. And I've done a little drawing here just to, not to scale, but pretty close. So, that's the big thing. If you take away 15,000 square feet of retention, you're going to have a lot more usable space across the front along Parsley Street.
I understand.
Is my, my concern with that.
Okay, so, so the, the, just for discussion.
But no matter what, I want to use Nettie Basden as the place.
Right, I understand.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Gamble?
I, um, not two, same thing on the Nettie Basin. I think there's, there's some, I like the fact that we've got it on paper and that we know it'll work. I think there's other ways that we can make it work that may be a little more user-friendly, pleasing to the eye. If not, this will work. But I think what we need to do right now is let's select a slight, the site. And we know we have a little bit of time on the actual footprint that we want the building to have because we've still got to tear the building down. And let's tweak this a little bit, get the exact numbers we're going to need from Water Management or our retention's going to be, and just kind of play with the footprint, see what we can come up with. I don't think we have to accept this as our final layout tonight, but we know that it'll work.
Is there any further discussion from the board? Mr. Harris, you had a comment?
For clarification. Commissioner Sessions, that delineated area that says retention pond, we know that it won't require all of that. It really is just the balance of the property, and somewhere within that area would be the retention. But it, that, there was no science put into that sketch. It just happened to be what was left over after the parking lot. So, even though it says retention area, it would be considerably less than that. I just don't know how much exactly less until it's actually engineered. What occurred with this drawing was I, on very short notice, spoke to Mr. Alcorn about putting all of this on a computer and working with dimensions that we had from the property lines and the square, total square footage. And we actually started trying to lay this building out, the State Attorney's Office out, on what we are calling the Nettie Basden property, with the front of the building facing partially. But we cannot fit the public parking between the street and the front of the building. So, what we then did was we delineated all of the property that the county owns, which wraps around behind this building and then goes back out to Pine Avenue and the area that we all recognize is the area where inmates wash cars. We have four lots over there that front on Pine Avenue. So, utilizing all of that area, we continued to work and move the building around until we found the ability to make it fit. So, in your drawing, it's showing the building behind this one, constructed, running east and west, with the front of the building facing the stadium. All of the parking for the public then fits on what we are calling the Nettie Basden property, allowing for that parking lot to run right up to the entrance to the State Attorney's Office. The secondary parking lot, secure parking area for employees, would be between the back of the building, the new building, and Pine Avenue on the four lots that we also own there. So, it essentially uses up all of the property. And then you have this balance between the stadium and the parking lot of the State Attorney's Office where stormwater would have to go. Because our best rough calculation is that there may be about 16,000 square feet of a new impervious area requiring stormwater retention. So, a piece of what is called stormwater retention on here would be used for that or required for it, and then it would leave some balance unused of that property as well. And, I mean, there may be sufficient property left to fit a small building and some more parking spaces of some sort, I don't know yet.
Question.
Mr. Wayne Wright?
What are, what are the storage containers?
Storage containers are currently sitting on part of this area that's shown as, essentially where that driveway is coming into the.
Where we're going to put them at is what I'm, I guess what I'm asking. Where we're going to move them to?
I don't know.
One of the reasons why I say I don't want to, we know that everything will fit on this site. I think there's things you could do. If you took the building, the way they currently have it sitting here, slide it closer to the jail so that the front of your building is kind of.
Faces partially.
Far, yeah, pace, not partially, but Pine Avenue.
Pine Avenue, I'm sorry.
And has more of a curb-uphere atmosphere where you're walking off the sidewalk into the front of the building, and you have your parking lot and your secure parking behind the building.
And to the side.
To the side.
To the west and the back.
We don't have to fix the orientation of the building.
That's what I'm saying.
That's already been, yeah, that's clear.
We can, if this board directs us to come back to many scenarios as we can possibly fit on there, then we can do that. But what we set out to do was determine whether or not we could fit all of the pieces, which is two parking lots and a building.
Right.
And retention, and we can fit the pieces.
Yep.
Agreed. Okay. So, do we know, do we, do we know when the Nettie Basden building will be torn down or when it'll start on?
I would guess four or five days out. Is when they should start. And I don't expect it to take very long.
Yeah, we'd already ordered that.
No, 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 I know that. I just, it's just still sitting there.
In this drawing, the, the part, the additional parking, the secure parking, does that bring us to the number that we need, or is that above the number that's required for that building?
That meets the minimum.
The minimum requirements.
The minimum requirement was 63 parking spaces, 60 of those are regular and three handicap. So, there's 42 in the public and 21 in the secure.
On the, on the site here, I guess where we're talking about locating the slide, we're going to slide it maybe to the east a little bit. But, I mean, do we know what types of soils are under there, anything like that?
I would say there's a lot of additional work that needs to be done. If I had to speculate, I'd say it's the same nasty clay that we dealt with here. When we built the parking lot, we had to undercut everything from the street back to the building, 30 to 36 inches deep, and backfill it, compact it, and then build the parking lot. So, I don't envision it being much different than that. What I would say as well, related to the stormwater, is when we get around to building a stormwater retention pond, I would hope to, even if it takes more area, go with a shallow pond and not a deep pond. We've run into problems when we go too deep.
Any further questions, comments?
No, I mean, comment. I did meet with Water Management today and after, and then I met with Mr. Harris. And I think some of the things that we talked about at Water Management, he'd already figured in. But we get a grandfathered in for the entire footprint of the Nettie Basin and any impervious services that are there, including the millings or any compressed lime rock anywhere on any of these properties. But one of the things that he did say is, in the landscaping or the design of the parking lot, rather than having actuals retention pond, is when we have it drawn up and engineered that we can have swales and shallow retention ponds around some of the landscaping in the parking lot so that we can get away from this mentality of we have to have a hole.
Pond?
Yeah. So, I'll just give you that food for thought when we do here or anywhere else. Task them to design.
All we're doing is creating a duck habitat.
Yeah.
The ducks will appreciate it.
They're dangerous.
They've got plenty.
They're dangerous.
He's not scared of anything. That's what I'm getting at. If we get in the way with being grandfathered in on a majority of our square footage, I think he told me 10,000 square feet of impervious material, you need about 2,500 square feet of retention pond. We didn't go into the depths of it, but he felt like we maybe could, through landscaping and parking lots and different things, we may be able to incorporate it into that.
Right. Okay. Anything else? Got them? All right. Well, I just want to, I forwarded, I emailed you guys something regarding an action plan, and I just want to kind of give you my comments. I'll try to get it to you as quickly as possible. And let me preface this by saying that, you know, to me. And let me preface this by saying that, you know, to me, I believe both sites present some challenges. Both have pros and cons to them. But I think this speaks to a bigger problem and we addressed it during the workshop regarding, not only when this, when this type of action comes before the board or this decision has to be made, we have been for years and years just reacting to it. And we have developed, and again, I want to say that whatever the board decides is fine. But I can't continue to support the way we've been doing things. And, you know, the private sector realized 20 years ago that co-locating and relocation and consolidation provides an opportunity to support business operations, increases efficiencies and workflow, and helps us to realize the cost savings in the long term. And if you haven't looked at the list of properties that we own, the county owns a real estate portfolio of properties, and it is very, very complicated. We're costing the taxpayers more money than they should be paying by adding to this problem, adding additional buildings. The taxpayer owns millions of dollars worth of property, spread all over the county. It's off the tax rolls, the major portion of which is tied up in these governmental buildings that we just continue to build. Facility downsizing and consolidation is not something that we, you know, all would like to embrace in an election year, and it's unpopular. And this was, this was during my campaign, three short years ago, consolidation of county service was a popular idea that appealed to just about everybody I talked with. Now, the political winds are pushing us in the exact opposite direction with no substantial competent evidence to illustrate the negative effects of such. So we're further complicating the portfolio of properties we see. We got to start forecasting the need for increased services because growth is coming. I've proved that to you. Over the course of 10 years, we'll be looking at additional 6,400 residents. And they're going to expect services. And visioning is not, is also not popular. But we have to implement a plan and we have to use reliable data so that we can react appropriately. The benefits are not only limited to cost reduction, cost efficiency, although that's what it always boils down to. There are many other things that are gained by adopting an action plan. Cost competitiveness, improved efficiencies, effectiveness of internal oversight by the Board of County Commissioners and Management, information visibility. We have an opportunity when people come in, they can see information that we want them to see. Optimization, optimized real estate holdings, infrastructure to support reliability and growth, cross-departmental coordination, elimination of distraction from politics on this issue in the future, better service level performance to the taxpayer, better constituent satisfaction. It's a recruitment tool for better talent. When you have, when you're trying to recruit an executive, they come in, they go, man, these people got their act together. Better constituent satisfaction, less property off the tax rolls by selling properties that we don't need anymore. You know, when, when growth comes, it increases costs because we have to give increased services. And the exposure, that exposure can either be positive or negative. And so I asked the board, what face do you want to put on Swanee County for the world to see when we're thrust onto the national stage, whether that be in a positive press or a negative crisis? Professionals begin with a strategic vision and values. They don't leave it at home when they come to work. And by leading this fight, we can align the people through leadership. We can streamline our governmental process and operations that will support economic development and growth by creating a roadmap in this costly area of operating a government. You know, we've been refining public policy. This board has led the way on that, whether it be personnel or economic development or administrative ways of doing things. We have done that through this, through this limited time this board has been seated. My plan will do this in the long run in addition to our portfolio properties. In the short term, no major changes are going to occur, gentlemen. There's no, going to be no vacuum of sucking people out of downtown. Too many times governmental officials realize there's a problem, but they choose not to solve it because it's unpopular. And even when their experience tells them it's necessary. So we need a comprehensive approach, gentlemen. We don't need to make hasty decisions that are based on our own facts or ideals that are not backed up by substantial competent evidence. I hope you support this plan. It does require an appropriation of funding, but I can't support continued unplanned development under the current approach. So join me in some dynamic change in this regard. But I can't support continuing to build buildings without a strategic plan, in far. And that's all I got to say about that. So you've seen the plan, you've had time to look at it and digest it. I hope you'll support it. There's a motion and a second on the floor as the record reflects. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, aye. All right, moving on to selection of a contractor. Item number A, under, under number seven, under general business. What are the wishes of the board? Come on up. I got, wait a minute, I got to turn the timer on.
Turn it on. Tim Alcorn, 14549, County Route 250, live. A question. How do you do a contractor for a building and a site without a plan?
Well, that did, wait a minute. There might be questions for you.
I'll go back.
Okay.
I don't see how you pick contractors. How do you go buy a new car when you don't have the new cars to look at? I don't, I don't, I don't see the difference now.
Okay. Okay. So we're not selecting contractors?
Mr. Chairman, are you going to respond to the question or?
No, 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 I'm not going to respond. Does anybody else want to respond?
I was going to ask Mr. Harris to respond, please.
I'll be led to respond.
Mr. Harris?
The county advertised for a request for proposals. I shared this in the workshop the other day. There are a couple of traditional ways that local governments obtain the services of contractors. One is to do an outright bid where the county commission completes a set of plans and offers that on the street. The other is a request for proposals, which is more akin to what we call design-build. If you do that, though, you have to have your minimum specifications in place and inform those that are going to submit proposals. And we provided those minimum specifications. In fact, we even included the floor plan with that advertisement. And we got three contractors that submitted their proposal. In the case of one of those contractors, they even included the engineering and architectural work that's required. Before that, the board had approved a task order with Derabian Associates for us to produce the architectural and design work that had to be utilized for the facility. But in this case, we put our minimum specifications on the streets and the company that offered the best price, and I don't know what the board is going to select in the end. But the contractor that offered the best price on the project was the one that built this facility right here. And he, for the building. And he's familiar with our specifications. And they would be much like what you're looking at in here today. No, this is, the site is separate, and it's separate in this agenda item as well. In fact, I've got some comments about.
Mr. Harris, I'm sorry to interrupt, but if you would, why don't you take a moment and describe the variance once you have taken out those options? By the time we, you summed it all up, those three individuals, those three contractors, within $100,000, $80,000, something like $100,000, maybe $150,000. But it was, everybody had different proposals and varying amounts. Couple hundred grand, you know, quarter million dollars difference. But by the time you boiled it all out to apples versus apples, there was only about $80,000, $150,000 difference between the three contractors. Just the building.
And I'm puzzled, and I didn't understand it, for just the building. I thought we were talking about the building.
I can't speak for you, but I think you have probably concerns similar to mine regarding a site. And I want to talk about that more when we get to that point.
You may answer my question.
The, the site specific, the earthwork specifically is my big concern. And I'll talk to the commissioners about that if they select a contractor.
Okay. Gentlemen, give me, give me some feedback.
I'll make a motion on the selection of the contractors, Luke McGinnis.
Motion made by Commissioner Wainwright, do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Fleming. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Oh, Mr. Harris.
If I could, please. In your packet, you have a price of $988,537. In this motion, I would ask that the board establish that as a not-to-exceed number for a couple of reasons. One, I would like to take some pieces out of what was submitted. And you have all of the allowances in your packet. There's one additional allowance of the security system I'd like to pull out of that contract when it's prepared. And Mr. McInnis knows that because we use a company on all of our buildings and that's what I would like to do. And I think we can do that very cost-effectively and save some money. But in addition to that, the earthwork is something that, if you notice, the biggest differences really came down to the allowances that each of the three contractors submitted for site work. They were just all over the place and it's because they didn't know what the site was. So what I had to do to protect the county was ask for their actual allowances for site work, a lot of which is just moving dirt around, earthwork, and what we call consideration of unsuitables. So I'd like to work with the contractor and pull out a substantial amount of his allowance for just outright earthwork, leave the paving in, leave the lime rock in. But the actual undercutting that I believe is going to be required, I'd like to come back to the board with a different approach to that. So when I say a not-to-exceed number of $988,537, my plan would be to reduce that quite a bit. In addition to that, I had previously given you a number to upgrade the roof with an additional warranty. That was $19,483.65. And I believe that that's money well spent. And I would recommend that. So even though we can pull out far more than that out of this proposal, I'd like to see that added in. And I'd like for the board to allow Mr. Privat and I to sit and meet with the contractor and come up with a good number in the end as we work on the contract and bring that back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris.
I need to withdraw my motion, Mr. Chairman.
You're going to withdraw your motion?
Yeah, I need to restate it, please.
Commissioner Fleming, you withdraw your second?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Go ahead, Commissioner Wainwright.
As a matter of simplicity, rather than making amendments, Mr. Chairman, in regard to the information that was given, offer a motion of approval for Luke McGinnis' construction, not with a not-to-exceed limit of $988,537 and with accompanying changes or modifications in the contract that would come back to the board's approval.
There's a motion on the floor, Commissioner, by Commissioner Wainwright, do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Fleming, is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, aye. Item number B, authorization of appraisals. We had talked at the workshop, gentlemen, about authorizing county administrator to request appraisals on several properties, one being the old Mizel property as well as the lots on the corner up here. What are the wishes of the board in regards to this item?
I make motion to approve the authorization of appraisals.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Sessions, seconded by Commissioner Gamble. Is there any further discussion?
If I might, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Your authorization will be for us to go out for bid for particular appraisals. I understand you're gearing toward that or made a motion. But we also have a praiser, an appraiser under contract. And what I would like to do is see what we have as a cost moving forward. Between the workshop and now, I haven't been able to get ahold of him to see what he would propose as, as a number here. So I'd like to let you know that that option is also available. If we can do it within the parameters of what we have contractually right now, it won't be necessary to be able to do the, or, you know, send out the bid for appraisals. But I'd like to ask you then in your motion to give the county administrator and myself some leeway on that so that we can address that issue first before we go out to the bid.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I withdraw my motion to allow that at this point in time.
Mr. Gamble?
Yes.
Okay. So what you're talking about, leeway is, is a dollar figure or what do you, what do you speak?
Well, within reason of what we've had before, if he'll do the same appraisals for, for those properties for, you know, the same amount, same style that's required, then we don't need to, you know, do a bid. But if he, and not having spoken to him, I can't answer for him, you know, on that. But if he's able to do that, it's been determined it's, and we're under contract. So, you know, we're, it's reasonable. But if we can't, then authorize us to then do the bid for it.
Okay. All right.
Follow me.
It's a kind of a two-way thing, check first and then.
That's fine, yeah.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Harris?
If I could.
Go ahead.
There's no harm in a motion, second, a vote to authorize us to go to bid. The point is, we won't, we won't go to bid if we don't need to. Okay? So, so if you go ahead and vote to allow us to go to bid, if necessary, we can do it. Otherwise, your procurement policy allows us to purchase that service within our limits. And that's really all we need.
So.
If, if it doesn't exceed that number, then that's what we will do.
Okay. The board has a decision to make. What do you want to make a motion for, one or both?
Just one, to go ahead and authorize to do it. But just wanted you to know that this is the way we wanted to proceed with it. If we can't get it done under our policies, then we'll proceed with it. But just don't be expecting something right away, you know, going back out. Give us an opportunity to see if we can do it the other way first.
Okay.
Just add your words, if necessary.
That's too hard.
I'd like to make a motion that, that we approve the appraisal process with consideration to who we have under contract first.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Sessions, do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Gamble. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. All right, moving on.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Hancock, you know a lawyer can't say anything in three words. If 14 will do. So, okay, thank you.
The way government works. No disrespect to anybody, but it's just, if it's simple, we can't do it.
Moving on to number eight, additional agenda items. The chairman calls for additional items. I have three to add. Gentlemen, are there any further items that you'd like to add to consideration by the board? Hearing none, I'll read these into the record. Number one is authorization to bid reconstruction of 169th Road and 167th Road, which is, point of reference is the Catalyst Site Connector. You'll, you'll recall that this road was the one that sustained a considerable amount of damage due to truck traffic. Number two, discuss with possible board action economic development grant agreement with Clausner Number One LLC. And number three, consideration of partial release of judgment lien for William Kirk Anderson Jr. First of all, let's, let's get number one out of the way. First of all, let's get number one out of the way. Authorization to bid reconstruction of 169th Road and 167th Road as the Catalyst Site Connector. Are there any questions before we make a call for a motion?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made by Commissioner Wainwright, do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Gamble, is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right. Going on to number two, and also three, Mr. Pravat will address these.
All right, thank you. Under item number two is the economic development grant agreement with Klausner. If you recall, back in October, we approved, or y'all approved, the award of a grant to Klausner. Well, shortly thereafter, you had a moratorium, and then we made a change to the resolution authorizing the economic development grants. And so I didn't get with Klausner as quickly as we would have liked to get language together, which would satisfy the original resolution and the second resolution, which you've adopted. So now, and it just happened after we, you know, had your timing for this, we were able to get with Klausner, come up with this agreement in the format that we have here. Under the resolution, they actually have 30 days to accept the form of agreement and negotiate changes afterwards, but I was endeavoring to take away that 30 days and get a good agreement with them ahead of time so that I could present it to you all at one time. So what you have before you for approval is what Klausner's counsel and myself have agreed to as the grant agreement moving forward. And I'd ask you to approve the agreement, and although I don't expect any changes, to be able to do, authorize me to make those changes, and then authorize the chairman to go ahead and execute after those negotiated changes, if any.
Thank you, Mr. Pravat.
Can you, is there a limit to the changes?
You know, what, basically, what I'm talking about, changes in here, the changes that'll be necessary now won't be anything other than, you know, a typo, or, and I tried to get all of those, we've bannered back and forth about that.
Nothing as far as value and lengths of time and all that?
No, sir.
Okay.
This is just, you know, getting down to, this is what the agreement is.
Okay.
What we typically, you know, what we would do is we'd come in and we'd say, okay, here's our agreement, and that's what Mr. Jackson and I have endeavored to do, is get us an agreement that we can utilize all the way across the board under this resolution now. And then we'd fill in the numbers appropriately, and then you would send it to Klausner or whomever. They would have 30 days to get back and forth with us and approve the agreement or not. But what we wanted to get to was a format that this is it, moving forward, everybody will fit under this model, and, you know, with different numbers, you know, plugged in for the values.
Okay. Does it, I mean, does this, this is, and this may be, I'm just trying to absorb all this right now, but I mean, this falls within the current parameters, maybe that's what he just asked, I'm just sitting here trying to read as fast as I can.
Yes, sir. On the agreement, going back through, when we see what's required by the resolution, and we took it section by section and incorporated it into the agreement, and then if you look typically, like at section number 13, section 13 would tell you where they have, when they're going to be eligible to have any of the payments. If you back back up into the other sections, it'll tell you what they expect, you know, to have as employment, and, which is in section five. And then moving forward, full-time jobs, excuse me, they're in section six, full-time jobs.
Equivalents.
Wage is in, you know, section six. The other things you're getting into, you know, to make sure that before they're eligible for any grant, they have to go ahead and make their full payment of the taxes that are due on the property before they're eligible for any grant. Then we get into being able to review their records, and they have to timely file, they have to file annually for the grant. Just because they are granted, given a grant, and it's going to be extended over a seven-year period of time, if they don't apply for the grant, they miss out.
Right.
Now, there's a provision here that says, whoops, if we miss one time, we can come back and ask y'all to reinstate that. But if they miss it for a second time, over the life of the seven years of the agreement, they're out, you know, of the agreement, you know, period then. So those are the things that go back in, you know. The last exhibit, Exhibit C, is what you approved back on October 6th. So you can see what it is and what's expected there. Mr. Jackson, as the economic developer, development director, you know, will go back in annually, you know, to review, to make sure that they are, you know, keeping up with the requirements that they've given and that are exhibited on Exhibit C. Also will be required to report quarterly, just like they would on their regular 941, you know, the wages, so that we'll be able to keep in touch with how many employees they have and what the actual wages are, so we'll be able to keep up with it quarterly, rather than, you know, waiting till the end of the year and then scrambling around to try to see whether it's still complying. So that's basically where we are. Exhibit B, if you recall, there was a stage in on the jobs. It was adjusted by the state as part of our initial development agreement with Klausner and the economic incentives that Klausner received from the state. So that schedule has been adjusted, you know, but it's the same as what we have in the development agreement, you know, moving forward. So again, having those things quarterly, we'll be able to see where they are, you know, keeping up with the tasks that they said that they would be, you know, would be doing. Basically, this goes back to, in effect, goes back to what the taxable value would be as a result of the tax assessment for 2014, and these incentives were based upon that. So let's just say, for instance, if they, you know, they estimated that I would have $22 million worth of building improvements out there, well, if it's only 20 million, you know, then you'd know that you're one-tenth less as a result of that part of the grant is going to be less because they haven't got all the way up to that, so they can't get the maximum amount. And what we based all of these numbers are, are on the maximum amount of what it was projected to be. If they don't put in tangible personal property of $87.5 million, it won't, the grant won't be back, you know, that, all the way up to that amount. Now, conversely, if they put in $130 million worth of tangible personal property on there, they're still only going to be eligible up to the maximum of the 87.5 million. So, you know, we've got an upside cap, but we, it can be lower depending on what their performance is under the agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Pravat. Are there any questions, Mr. Pravat, by the board? Mr. Hancock?
I do have one question. I'm sorry, Mr. Hancock, just if, oh, in the application process each year, is that also for the, through the county and this particular resolution that we have, and also the property appraiser's office as well?
The property appraiser will confirm what the numbers are. You make an application to the economic development director.
Okay.
For the grant.
Okay.
You know, and then they make the...
But it's going to be based off of those hard numbers that they report to Lamar?
That's correct. That's correct.
Or what he gathers.
What he assesses.
What he gathers, yeah. Okay. I'm done.
Mr. Hancock?
Beau Hancock, 6135 Wiggins Road, on page six, item D, section 13, item D. If I'm reading that correct, the maximum amount that grants or taxes were given, whatever way you choose to phrase it, is going to be $3,942,000, period?
Yes, sir. That would be the maximum. Like I indicated, if they, that is what, using the numbers that they put in the application, and then the board had utilized those numbers back in October to say, okay, this is the maximum you're going to get. You know, if you build everything all the way out to those numbers, that's the maximum you're going to be able to get. If the assessment comes out to less than 22 million on building, or $87 million on the other, you know, that 3-9 will be less over the seven-year period of time.
Okay, but that's it. $3,942,000 over the seven-year period.
Correct.
Yes, sir.
That's it.
Total maximum amount, yes.
Okay.
Which doesn't include, again, and I know you remember this, that there's no, that doesn't, you know, the school board and water management.
Oh, I understand. That's just Admiral.
This is Admiral.
I know. On page one, the bottom of the page, that whereas, you're saying down here, without seeking incentives to reimburse up to 100% of general, the general county portion of Admiral Warham taxes on capital improvements and net new tangible personal property for four years associated with the project.
Yes, sir.
And carries over.
If you recall, the way the program is designed is the maximum that you, maximum time period that you were eligible for this is a four-year period of time.
Uh huh.
Now, instead of, okay, they pay it in, we make a grant back of some portion of that if they continue to be qualified, instead of that, we take that number and extend it out over a five-year, I mean, a seven-year period of time, so that they're not getting money in, money out, they're only getting a portion back of what they're, would be entitled to. It is paid over seven years.
I just wanted to clarify, because this is the first, I've seen this document. I mean, it was not in the agenda packet, it's an additional agenda item.
Yes, sir. Like I indicated, this is something that, after the agenda was published, matter of fact, yesterday.
How can the public become informed on these issues if we do not have the documentation available?
I would submit to you, Mr. Hancock, that the information that you have here has already been addressed at the October 6th meeting, and that information is simply attached as Exhibit C to the contract. The board addressed it all back then, and all of the numbers are all back then, were all then. For what information financially that you would be concerned about, I submit to you that the remainder of these pages, which total up to about, how many pages did I end up? Nine pages is the good legalese and repeating of stuff that, out of the resolution, that I felt necessary to protect the county's butt as we move forward with, excuse me, as we move forward with this.
Okay. Never mind. I'll talk to you later.
All right, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Pravat. What are the wishes of the board regarding this economic development grant with Klausner Number One?
My motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made by Commissioner Wainwright, do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Gamble, is there any further discussion?
Just to clarify what he was protecting, I didn't hear that down here.
Yeah, thanks.
CYA.
Nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right, moving back up to number three, consideration of partial release of judgment lien for William Kirk Anderson Jr. We'll give our attention back to Mr. Pravat, County Attorney.
Yeah, thank you. In June of 2009, there were two criminal cases resolved with Mr. William Kirk Anderson Jr. As a result of the cases, there were two final judgments that were placed in the records with regard to reimbursement of certain costs that were incurred by the county, and a small amount of restitution included in those judgments. Mr. Anderson went off, and he's served his time, and he's now back in town, and we've received a request from him with regard to looking at those particular judgments, and then being able to partially satisfy the judgment lien that goes along with those two particular items. The two items, because they were in two different numbered cases, and I'll let Mr. Siegmeister address why it would have been different, but anyway, the two numbers ended up a total of $3,091. Well, Mr. Anderson, through Mr. Erth, has presented a request to release the interest in a certain parcel of property of 3.92 acres in McAlpin for the equivalent of one-half of the judgment face amounts, or $1,545. Now, just because we released the property, it doesn't mean that the judgment fully goes away, but we released the judgment lien sitting out there as it would go to this property. You know, we still have an opportunity to collect the remainder of it, you know, at some time down the road, but that's why they're out there. When these types of opportunities come up and they move on to sell a piece of property, you're able to collect this. Now, quite frankly, we're not collecting all of it, and quite frankly, rarely do we collect anything on the vast majority of these items. So I don't make a recommendation, you know, one way or the other on it, but that's what he's proposing at this particular time.
Thank you, Mr. Pravat. What are the wishes of the board in regard to this matter? If there are any questions for Mr. Pravat, I'm sure he'll be happy to answer them.
Mr. Pravat, you said that it would come back at some point in time?
It can come back.
It can come back.
Yes, sir. This is only a partial release of those particular judgments, and if there's other ways, I mean, we can go out and enforce them, but there's other ways that if there's another piece of property that he sells, or if he voluntarily comes in, you know, he's got other restitution and stuff that Mr. Erth represented that he was keeping up with and, you know, is timely on. And then when he makes the total restitution, additional amount of $1,545, then we can completely satisfy it.
Any further questions?
I'm not familiar with this at all. The restitution, is that being paid to the county because...
There are certain small items that are part of restitution for costs and things that happened during the action. There's another body over here that had, I mean, that has the restitution for the individual victim.
Okay, so this isn't the victim's restitution?
Yes, sir.
This is court cost or something of that nature?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That was my question.
As part of this, gentlemen, I ask you to authorize the chairman to execute the partial release after negotiation of corrective language. What I received from Mr. Erth, if it was to be considered, if you were to consider the request, I didn't find satisfactory, so authorize me after I change it to where I like it, and then the chairman's to sign it.
And because of this judgment, the county is holding a lien on his property?
Yes, sir.
I'm assuming he's trying to sell the property, and that's why he wants the lien removed?
Yes, sir.
He doesn't want to pay us.
As it was relayed to me, the property was family property. The family property to be sold because of a death in the older generation, Mr. Anderson now has an interest in the property. He doesn't have title to the property, but he has an interest in the property. And for the entire family to be able to sell the property, he needs to have this released so that the property can be sold. so that the property can be sold. As I understand from Mr. Erth, that didn't get into the full amount and everything on the contract, but Mr. Anderson would still receive a small portion of money, you know, from the sale, but he couldn't release the property and get clear title to it without a release of our lien just to this piece of property.
I'm assuming the money that he's going to get for his interest in the property wouldn't be enough to cover the lien?
Not all of it, as I understand it, how it was represented to me.
Can we release the difference?
Sir?
Is that what this is?
Well, this is what he proposes is to pay 50% of it now and have the other 50% still remain out there for him to pay at some other time or for us to attempt to collect at some other time. You don't have to do this. I mean, if he's going to do it at all, you can require that it all be paid and that's typically... Typically is not the right word there, but that's why the judgment is set.
But it's a good word, though.
This is... Yeah. Typically, we don't get anything on these things, but when a judgment is out there, if you want to sell your piece of property to get clear title...
If somebody's got any of this property they're going to collect on it.
You're going to have to get a release. That's right.
Yeah.
You know, otherwise you can't get clear title to sell it and he's offering to pay $1,545 to clear the judgment part off of this and its attachment, a lien attachment to this particular piece of property.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Harris. Sure.
Mr. Pravat, in your professional opinion, can they not satisfy the entire lien at closing?
I think they could.
Okay. So if this board doesn't release any part of the lien, they can satisfy the entire lien at closing?
They would be required to do such.
Exactly.
Or lose the sale.
Correct.
I don't want to get into their personal reasons on why they need to sell the property, but there's a lien on it for a reason. I'm not really in favor of moving it because he's hard of... I mean, this was part of whatever penalty was laid on him when he was convicted and I say we leave it.
What is the consensus of the board?
Chairman.
Mr. Pravat. Come on up. State your name and address for the record, please, sir.
Chairman, my name is Jimmy Cherry, 204 Johnson Avenue, southwest Live Oak, Florida. I happen to be in Mr. Erth's office during the time of that discussion. He is my cousin. His mother died and left his daughter and him some property, but he served his time for those liens and he is 62 years old. He is not a young kid. He is willing... I was in Mr. Erth's office and he is willing to pay the $1,500 and I was there when Mr. Erth said that commissioners will have to release that.
Thank you very much for that.
I have a question, Jimmy.
Yes, sir.
So at the closing, is there an instrument written up that guarantees that he has to pay at a closing, like a contract?
Yeah, well, I have not seen the contract, but I'll tell you typically for a purchaser to be able to get clear title to the property, which... And to be able to receive title insurance on the property, you've got to have it. All of those liens have to be satisfied and this would be... Have to be one of the liens that these two judgment liens would have to be satisfied for them to be able to get clear title. And the alternative is to get a partial release like we're asking for here to still clear that part of the problem... That part of the property from the judgment lien.
So if the lien is settled at closing, that doesn't give it clear title?
If the lien is paid off in its entirety at closing, it isn't clear title and it also would entitle him to satisfaction of those judgments out there, but a total satisfaction rather than a partial satisfaction.
In other words, we're just relying on good faith that he'd come back and pay the balance?
If you approve this request.
Right.
Is he planning on selling the property?
It's my understanding from Mr. Erth that he has a contract to sell the property at this time and whatever y'all decide here will depend whether or not there's a closing or not or what the proceeds from the closing would be used, how it would be used.
Is there any kind of way if this request is approved and the person, the individual that's purchasing the property, they put a check through the county and the other part, you know, in that way?
I wouldn't recommend that. I'd recommend that all be satisfied directly at the closing.
Mr. Harris.
I've sat through a lot of these things. If you do not waive a partial... If you don't agree to a partial lien, if that sale is important enough, you get 100% of your money when that lien is satisfied at closing because when the purchaser writes a check and gives it to the title company who then disperses the funds, they write a check to the county for 100% of what the county is owed in that lien.
What the lien's for.
And it's a really simple procedure. So if you don't waive any part of this thing, they go through with this contract and sale, the county will get 100% of the judgment satisfied.
All right. Well, my position is, being in the real estate business, that's the way it goes down. I mean, if you've got a lien, you've got to satisfy the lien. I think that this is... I mean, if they're going to sell the property, they need to sell the property. There's a lien that has to be satisfied and the lien is there for a reason. I think the board just needs to leave it alone. I mean, that's the reason it's there, the reason it's there. Unless somebody wants to make a motion otherwise.
If we stick to policy, we don't show favoritism for any particular person.
Understood.
If we follow policy, then everybody's treated equitably and the same. So I just assume leave it just like it is.
Understood.
All right, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Pravat. Moving on to item number nine, public concerns and comments. I have no comment cards at this time. First one here this evening is from Mr. Robert Ford and he's going to talk to us about Douglas Center use. Mr. Ford?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, just a brief statement and comment on the Douglas Center use. I want to just preface my comments by thanking Commissioner Fleming by bringing forth the recommendation to set aside the $75,000 for the Douglas Center use and I want to thank Commissioner Gamble for putting forth some proposals that will use the Douglas Center. And I just want to see some follow-through on these things. I've seen Sheriff Cameron turn in some monies over the last two to three years and a lot of that money is just sort of sitting there along with some insurance money that is setting aside. I heard the number about $150,000 that probably may be there, but I would like to see some proposals, you know, what this money's going to be used for, some restoration of some buildings, you know, for the supervisor election office or whatever. I hear comments echoed about the ill repair or the condition of the roofs on some of the buildings is leaking, so with some reservations on accepting any proposals for using the Douglas Center, but I would like to see some reports on the condition of the roofs on what building or what aisle or what wing of the Douglas Center, for we would know exactly what we're talking about instead of hearing these statements made, sometimes probably without basis, maybe without basis because we don't know. Different people may be just echoing what they've heard from this person or that person. So I would like to see some reports or some assessments on the condition of those wings for we can move forward when the discussion get there if the commission so decides to move the... Some storage for the supervisor of election office or any other activities going on out there. I have a passion for the Douglas Center, so I don't want to hide that. I want to see some use of it. It is county property. I think it can be used as Commissioner Gamble says and still maintain some of the historical integrity of the building out there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ford.
Mr. Ford, if you would, please, although we know who you are.
Oh, yeah, you're right.
Say your address.
Okay, my address, Robert Ford at 8896 135th Loop, Live Oak, Florida, 32060. Thank you.
Sir.
Mr. President.
Chairman, a point of clarification. Commissioner Wainwright?
Mr. Ford, I was just going to respond by saying that in the past, we did get estimates for roof repairs and things, so what I was trying to express earlier, and I'm not good at articulating my thoughts, but what I want to see is just exactly what you said. We would have proposals that would include cost estimates, hard numbers, feasibility studies of either renovation or building or whatever, but ultimately, my desire from the time that we acquired that property has been is to utilize it, make something of it. You know, it's a shame that we've got that set in there, you know, and what it's going to take to change it and where we're going with it, obviously there needs to be some vision, so, but going back to your statement, what I was saying and what I was going upon was we did have some cost estimates sometime back for what it would take to repair some of those buildings. Moving forward, we would, again, as I just stated, we would see proposals, bids, estimates on the feasibility and of the whole thing, of what we're doing, whatever building we're looking at.
Thank you, Mr. Wainwright.
Now, we'll hear from Deborah Johnson. She's going to ask questions about Mr. Fleming's motion for you all to visit River Crossing and resolution. I can't read the rest of it, but she'll update it.
It's a smiley face.
It's a smiley face.
It's a smiley face. I'll make you happy. What happened to that resolution?
Go ahead.
What happened to Mr. Fleming's resolution? I didn't quite follow there. Are you not going to go on site? I mean, are you...
I mean, every board member is welcome to visit the site. I mean, I don't know that the board's going to do anything.
I mean...
You joined by his motion?
Yes, sir.
I think it failed.
It failed. They were nothing there's... Not going to workshop it.
The workshop failed. I remember that, but I don't remember the discussion about going on site. So you're not willing to go on site to see a very important... To our county and to our livelihood endeavor of a 1.1 cubic billion feet gas pipeline going under the river 675 feet offshore. And yes, I'll agree, I've seen sinkholes too. They don't bother me much either, but when I got a pipeline like that running across it, I think I might want to look at it and look at how many of them. And when you see a pile of water standing right here and a sinkhole next to it and there's no water in that sinkhole, you know that's an active sinkhole and there was more than one of them. So, I mean, I'm asking y'all, what's up? Why aren't y'all not concerned enough to go and look at this instead of listening to what other people say?
Mrs. Johnson, any commissioner...
I'm Mrs. Randall.
Say that again?
I'm Mrs. Randall. I'm sorry.
You have Mrs. Johnson on your thing?
I'm sorry.
All right. Mrs. Randall?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Commissioner Sessions, you can talk to him independently.
I understand.
He can go and take a walk with you. You can talk to myself. You can talk to Commissioner Gamble. You can talk to Commissioner Wainwright after the meeting.
All right.
Set up appointments to go out there and look at it if they so desire.
Okay, but as a board, you're not willing...
But as a board, I mean, it just runs into all kinds of complications, you know.
How's that? You just drive out there and take a walk through the woods. It's really kind of a pleasant walk. There's pathways.
I mean, there's problems with two commissioners riding to a meeting together. I mean, you know, it's that kind of thing.
Well, I mean...
Small thing called sunshine.
Different vehicles.
Anyway...
Well, anyway, I guess, all right, pass that subject. So that's going to be have to take and I need to take up with everybody, just are you going to do that?
Correct.
All right. The other thing I want to know is that, you know, okay, you're not going to... You're not willing to go to a major site that's affecting our water supply, okay? Could drain the river, by the way. That very well could happen. It would be like the Lapa Ha. Okay, the neutrality resolution is my understanding, for me to understand better and I think the public may be too, this resolution really is doing nothing but making y'all neutral in that you will have no voting or no... Nothing to say about the pipeline.
It just adopts a stand. I mean, we could pass a resolution next week, you know, whatever we wanted to, but I mean, what it does is it makes a statement. It just says, look, we've heard both sides. We've heard your side. We've heard the other side. We've heard... And the board as a whole has said, you know...
As a whole?
Well, I mean, you know, as a majority, has said, look, we don't... You're welcome to come up to the podium and speak for your three minutes. You understand that?
Yes, sir.
But as far as agenda items and things like that, you know, we've spent a considerable amount of time on it and we reached no consensus.
That's why I beg to differ with you. You have never... This board has never allowed anything on the agenda to do with that pipeline.
What I'm saying is you asked about the neutrality issue.
Yeah, and what I'm trying to say is that...
So what I'm saying is that if something was submitted in regards to it, it would be... There was a... We've adopted a neutral stance on it.
You already had that. You never allowed it before. You've never allowed us to talk.
We didn't allow you to speak for 18 minutes at one meeting.
No, 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 no.
18 minutes.
No, Mayor Lee Gibson from Irish Santa Fe River asked to be put on the agenda.
Because we...
And doesn't allow it.
Basically, we said that, you know, we weren't going to address it.
We... Okay. The whole board said that. Okay, and then...
Mrs. Johnson, your time's expired.
Okay. Well, I think I said everything I wanted to say except, you know, I think I pointed out to Mr. Wainwright quite clearly that sinkholes on a farm, a little bit different than sinkholes carrying a pipeline of that size and that magnitude over our water supply. Okay? Thank you, sir. Appreciate y'all.
All right. Moving on, administrators' comments and information. What do you got for us?
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, first of all, I want to say publicly that I appreciate Mr. Alcorn dedicating a lot of time Friday to help put this drawing together. He had been out of town. I know he came racing in and had one of his employees just sit there and we worked on this thing and continued to work on it until we came up with something that we knew would fit, so I appreciate that. In your agenda packet, commissioners, I placed a list of... Actually, it's just an update on road projects that we had discussed back during the budget workshop. The first page in your packet is the list that you received back then. The updated page is the one right behind it. You will note that at the time of the budget workshop, we pointed out to you that we had 29,167,789 worth of projects that we had to... My reason for that at the time was my concern that we have to float these projects throughout the course of the year and we had considerable discussion about that. As you'll note on that second page, as updated, we now have 30,759,997 worth of projects. I believe about a million and a half additional. Some of that's the result of adding... We added 104th Terrace to the Hogan Road Project. DOT agreed to fund that and then we received additional amounts of money on some of these projects. One was the one that you just allowed us to bid tonight and that was a million dollars additional for that road that goes up the east side of the... additional for that road that goes up the east side of the catalyst site, the 132. So we still have a substantial dollar amount of projects that we're tackling this year. We gave you our best shot at giving you an update on where we are with design on these various projects and/or construction, so we still have a lot of work to do this year, and it's going to cost a great deal of money. I'm thankful that DOT has agreed to all of these projects. In addition to this, we are preparing lists of projects to send over to DOT with scrap and stock. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. We're on to board members' inquiries, requests, and comments. I'll start this evening. I always point you guys. During our discussion phase regarding the state's attorney's office, I had mentioned a action plan proposal. And we appropriate funding for all kinds of things. One thing we rarely do is appropriate funding for our own self. And you will note that the price tag of this, I've requested is $125,000. Reason for that is for appraisals, data collection, development of renderings, overlays, things like that, so we can create a footprint for what we envision and what the community envisions as our anticipated future needs resulting from growth. And whether that fall within the city limits, or whether that fall outside the city limits, or whether that falls in dual locations, whether that be at the Douglas Center and downtown, it doesn't matter to me. But the point is, and Mr. Ford spoke so eloquently to it this evening, is he has no idea what that funding is for. And setting up a plan for these things, like we have in the capital improvement plan, is great, but if we don't have the data, if we don't, we cannot collect the data to make appropriate decisions and create a plan for the future of vision for our county, then it makes it hard to answer questions when people say, well, or for employees or staff say, well, where are we going next? What are our needs, what are our needs for growth? So I'm going to, I'm going to ask the board for those funds, because it seems like we invest in every project under the sun outside of what our needs are. And our needs at this time are an action plan. After reviewing the material, they may, you know, after you review the material that I've sent you, you may choose to adopt this plan, and I would appreciate if you guys would comment on it at some point in time, and I'll bring it back on the agenda. But I'll, I'll continue to forward the information about this, and I think it's worthwhile to do this, so that we can see where we're going, instead of having to make decisions on the fly and react to these problems as they come down the pipe. So, that's all I have to say. Who wants to start?
I would.
Commissioner Fleming?
I have a comment. I received a lot of phone calls about the train track. It's been a problem.
Yeah, I did too.
And Mr. Harris and I have discussed on several issues about going to DOT, about getting a route that would route a road over the train track.
Oh, yeah.
This weekend was a, this week itself was a very good opportunity. It presented a problem, it poses a problem. And I know DOT is going to be here next weekend, I think that will be something that we need to bring to the table in order to alleviate these problems with this train. So, traffic has been backed up, I mean, people are tired.
Yeah.
And just that one incident, so, I think that's something that we need to look at.
Thank you, Commissioner Fleming. Commissioner Sessions?
I just think his concerns, I've been calling, getting called all day about it too, but everything else is fine.
Thank you. Mr. Wainwright?
I don't have anything, Mr. Chairman, right now.
Mr. Gamble?
I got one thing. Let me check the date, make sure it's right. I believe it's Tuesday. Ms. Betty still here? Tuesday, the 26th, at 10:30, is that correct? The groundbreaking... I believe that's correct. Groundbreaking for the library in Dillon Park will be at 10:30 on the 26th, at the actual site. I believe all the commissioners have received an invitation, that invitation is extended to the public. Anybody that would like to be there, we'd be glad to have you there. 10:30, I believe it is.
What day?
The 26th.
At 10:30.
Thank you, Commissioner Gamble. Any other informational items? I guess that was it.
That's it.
All right, gentlemen, I only need one thing.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Commissioner Gamble, seconded by Commissioner Sessions. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
See y'all next time.